Order the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting. And we'll move on for an approval of the agenda.
I move the Board of Education to approve the agenda for the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting.
One second.
Buyers?
Yes.
Could do Blackwood. Costello.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Gordon Ross.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero.
Okay, we'll move on to the report of the Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Swift.
Thank you, Madam President and members and all who are joined here in person and those who are joining us remote. It's my great honor to give an update on the Lawrence Public Schools. I appreciate the work of our students and teachers, school and district teams, our parents and community members as we narrow in on the wrap-up of this fall semester. If you can just believe how quickly that has gone this fall. I just really appreciate that as we're out in schools, we still see classrooms fully focused, teachers are teaching their hearts out and students are learning. So nine more days of that and we will wish everyone a wonderful winter break. Very grateful to all the staff, school, families and community members who've joined in conversations this fall. We've been with many, many groups and it has been wonderful to hear directly from the experiences of our students. And then over many, many meetings to start to really hear patterns, patterns within the groups and then patterns that extend across the groups. So we've learned a lot from listening to school experiences and to the priorities of our folks and we look forward to sharing all of that back with the community in January. Now, it's not too late to jump right onto the front page of the website or to use the link in your school newsletter, but we'd love for folks to jump into that written survey if you've not yet done so. It's right there on the front page of the website. I just want to give a thank, a thank you and a shout-out to our adaptive PE teachers who did such a great job, I'm just going to jump ahead, did such a great job in hosting an inclusive sports night earlier last week for families of students with disabilities. And they do that in cooperation with our Lawrence Special Education Advisory Committee. We were really delighted last week to see Liberty Memorial Central Middle School organizing their first student showcase. It was last Wednesday evening. Josh is here and other members were really proud of that effort, really to see our students share their project-based learning projects with their families and with the community. I'm sorry the schedule issues prevented me from being there personally, but I heard great reports about it. Wanted to share the American Red Cross presented Free State Senior Lucas Fern with its life-saving award. Earlier in the fall, Lucas successfully performed the Heimlich maneuver to assist Firebird educator Jacob Lewis, who was choking. We're so grateful for Mr. Lewis's safety and Lucas's quick actions which he learned while serving as a lifeguard. We have amazing arts awards for Lawrence High School students. Lola Brown and Adele Erickson earned national awards in the Young Arts Competition for Photography and Painting respectfully. Here is some of their work. They each will receive two hundred and fifty dollars as well as mentorship opportunities and a lifetime of creative professional development as part of an intergenerational community of artists. Adding to that, Moore Lawrence High School, the twenty-eighth Annual High School Visual Arts Competition received six hundred and forty entries this year. And I just want to point out that only a hundred of the entries were accepted into the juried exhibition in Kansas. And of the hundred that were accepted in the state, twenty-one of them were Lawrence High School students. So we very proudly ruled that day. In two D, Lola Brown placed second and Rin J. Third. In three D, Rue Yother won first place on her ceramic sculpture and Jada Moore placed third for their jewelry. Congratulations to these students and their teachers, Emily Marco Latos, Angela Perkins and Todd Potte. On from student to staff recognitions, Mike Jones, as you all know, Director of Lawrence High Bands. He was just named the Northeast Kansas Music Educators Association Outstanding Band Director. He also is that professional organization's nominee for the State Outstanding Music Educator Award. On last Friday morning, it was my great honor to join the team over at New York Montessori in elementary as they recognized Jory Roberts Administrative Assistant with the Fall Class Act Award. Every student at New York was lined up out in the hallway and some ruse had been concocted so that Jory was the last to arrive and what a beautiful surprise for her. Her colleagues describe her as hardworking, helpful and joyful. They say she loves and cares for them and is the happy heart at the center of their school. Our thanks to Jory Roberts and to our lead partner, Trudy Credit Union for presenting her with a five hundred dollar check. We're so grateful to our farm-to-school partners. As winter weather arrives, we really thank our partners for providing delicious fruits, vegetables and protein to our kitchens and cafeterias during the fall growing season. Look at this data from this season. All of our farm and ranch partners, South Baldwin Farms, Jurack Family Produce, Juniper Hill Farms, Table View Farm and Two Trails Ranch are within fifty miles of Lawrence, ensuring fresh products. Nutrition and Wellness Director Julie Henry provides a by-the-numbers look here that you can see on this slide, some of our farm-to-school purchases over the fall. We're really excited to share our cellphone expectations this evening. I want to honor and give credit to the Board of Education for your courage in moving forward with the policy. And I just want to take a moment to assure the community that our teachers and students have been in conversation, our principals have actually been working along with our directors and our full team to make sure that our expectations are congruent with the board's policy. So we're really delighted to be able to bring together all those dots and communication will go out this evening pending the board's vote. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to share this superintendent's report and thank you for the opportunity to serve in the Lawrence Public Schools. I was going to hit on next steps. I can do that during the itemer now. Okay. Go ahead. Did you say for me to go ahead?
Oh, wait.
Okay. Okay, very good. Excellent. Want to wish everybody a wonderful winter break. It's not for nine more days though, just saying.
Thank you, Dr. Swift.
Thank you.
So I also have on my, we're moving on to the report of the President of the Board and I wanted to also extend to everyone my hope and wish that you have a relaxing winter break and to say thank you for the work that you're doing to wrap up this semester, both to students, staff, educators and families. I know you're, you are coming along with us on that. So thank you to everyone. The rest of my president report is an invitation for Officer Bishop to join us here at the Board. She has brought with her, well, I'll let you share a little bit. So I've asked her to come and explain. Introduce us to Rosie. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if you would.
She has a bowl.
I know.
Bit even, oh. To this.
So you can work with her a little easier.
Oh, wow, okay. Well, we're not very exciting, but I'm Officer Bishop. I am a School Resource Officer, one of six in our community and I work primarily at West Middle School. The Lawrence Police Department has instituted a therapy dog and her name is Rosie. And so she has been coming to school for about three months and the kids absolutely love her. Ms. Jones had the opportunity, I spoke to her college class the other day and we were speaking about some of the interactions that I've had with students with being in the school for two years prior to her. And now having her, I can see a marked difference in engagement and connection with students. And I know that Dr. Swift met her on our community conversations night and was a big fan. So she's here with me this evening if, after the meeting, if you'd like any pets or anything like that.
We might ask you to have her come on the days we have tough things to talk about to keep us all in line. So I appreciate your work and that you've taken on this new endeavor in your career and really thank you for doing it, bringing it to the kids.
Sure, she's a great dog.
Yeah.
Okay. We will now move on to public comment. We have a couple of public comments that are specific to the cellphone policy. So we typically hold those until we get to that agenda item. So if, just so you know, I have them. We're looking forward to hearing your comments before we vote. So we'll hear from you so that it can inform our decision. And then I think we might have one other, do we have another, is there anyone online or is Mandy here? And nobody on, okay. So if we hear from Mandy, we might be able to make some space for that. To move the meeting along, even though we are going to hold the public comment, I think it's, it might be appropriate to read the public comment policy now, if that's okay and we'll just hold, just in case Mandy shows up. Do you mind?
The USD four ninety-seven Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking the time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must fill out the public comment registration form so that district staff or the board can follow up with you as necessary. This is your time to share your opinions. However, public comment is not the appropriate forum for making complaints about specific staff or students. If your comments relate to complaints concerning students or staff, such complaints must be addressed to district staff as provided under Board Policies KN or GAE. The Board President or Presiding Officer of the meeting may direct that a public comment request be redirected to staff to comply with board policy and/or to protect the privacy of individual staff or students. If you need assistance in sharing a complaint or concern with district staff, please let the Board Clerk or other district staff know. Topics discussed in public comment shall be germane to the business of the Board. Comments or acts that are threatening to staff, the Board or others in attendance, including the use of language or behavior that is disruptive of the board meeting, will not be permitted during public comment. In addition, because students may be in attendance or watching online, members of the public will refrain from using foul or obscene language. The district assumes no responsibility and/or liability for the information shared during public comment. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. The Board President or Presiding Officer will invite comments, comment on topic not included on the meeting agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments relating to agenda items are welcome after the Board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you, GR. So we will move on now to board commentary. I'm going to start with, Carol's joining us remotely. Carol, do you have comment tonight or do you want me to move on?
This is Carol. I don't have too much to say because my throat is really sore, but I, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that you're here. I'll start at the end. There we go, Yolanda.
Good evening. Since our last meeting, I did have the opportunity to attend the KLC Local Elect Officials Fellowship down in Wichita. It was very enlightening. I attended somebody program before during Leadership Lawrence, but to get, be a part of this and to be a part of other elective officials in different parts of Kansas was very enlightening to notice that, know that we are not the only school district that is going through the issues that we're going through and stuff. And so it gave us a list of more people we can talk to when we're having those, those common issues. It was nice to hear how some of the other districts are doing things to help their retention rate. One of the districts took one of their older schools and turned it into a daycare center for their district staff. So I thought that was a pretty cool idea. They kind of, the teachers was the ones that got together and brought that to the Board to do. So I thought that was pretty cool as well. We had a couple of mayors that was there as well, city council members. Lawrence kind of dominated the, the leadership. I think it was, what, six of us there from Lawrence? So it was pretty nice. And then also attend negotiations meeting on last week, so.
Thank you for going and sharing with us what you learned and the good ideas that maybe we can implement here. So, and Costello.
So we have some policies up for second read tonight. Policy JDAA, Student Misuse of Medications. This would allow the discipline of any student found to be self-administering their own medicine at a dosage or rate exceeding product label instructions, distributing over-the-counter or prescription meds to other students or possessing another student's over-the-counter or prescription meds. Policy JG FGB, Supervision of Medications. This has been amended to remove duplicative language in student self-administration now found in JGF BGA. That policy's also up for student, or for second read, student self-administration of medication, lays out policy around this topic, including student eligibility, authorization required, employee immunity, waiver of liability, as well as additional requirements for students prone to specified emergencies. And it also notes that controlled substances may not be self-administered. Earlier today, I was able to tour the College and Career Center as a part of my role on the Schools Foundation. I am the Board Liaison for that school. It was great to learn more about all of the different programs that are housed there and I was able to watch some students learning how to dice a potato and they were all way better than I am. Think I should come in for Onion Day as well. And I was very sorry to have missed the Southwest Band Concert last Thursday, but due to a delayed flight and Southwest taking thirty-five minutes to get my baggage out, I was not able to get back in time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So just wanted to share a few things, actually going back to kind of the middle of November since I hadn't had a chance to share about them. The Facilities and Operations and Policy Committee meetings in November that I attended, I think were reported on during the last board meeting. On November thirteenth, I had the lovely opportunity to attend the Chamber Government Relations Lunch where Dr. Swift reported on work of our district and I really appreciated her sharing with the community all of the great things that, that she had to share about what we are doing in Lawrence Public Schools. That next day was Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day and I want to thank Ashley Smith at Quail Run Elementary for the invitation to come and be a, an observer of the parade that they did of their students. They had all of their students make posters and do a walk in honor of Ruby Bridges and it was delightful. And thank you to Mrs. Smith and the Quail staff for organizing such an inspiring event. The kids' posters were outstanding. KASB Convention was that weekend as well. And I wanted to give a shout-out to the USD four ninety-seven Team Steam Robotics Team, which participated in the district showcase in Wichita on November fifteenth. I spent some time talking with students on the robotics team and they did an outstanding job of representing their work in our district and our students and staff. Thank you to the community members that spoke with me at the West Middle School Community Conversation on November nineteenth. I too participated. I was one of the six Lawrence folks that were able to participate in the Leadership Center Fellowship Program along with Yolanda. We had just really excellent deep conversations and some really good learning that I hope to use as we do our work at the board table. So appreciated that opportunity. And then I wanted to give a couple of quick kind of legislative policy updates. So interim committee, interim committees of the legislature have been meeting in the last couple of months. Right now, the big ones that impact K-12 are, the legislature has decided to do its own budget crafting process. So there are multiple meetings of the Legislative Budget Committee happening this month. The education budget for the Department of Education and the recommendations for K-12 funding will be on the agenda on Friday. So they are meeting from nine AM to five PM on Friday and it is streamed online so you can watch it on YouTube. The education stuff is supposed to happen in the morning between, I think, nine forty-five and noon. So if you're interested in observing, in observing that conversation. And then also there was a meeting of the Joint Financial Institutions Pensions Committee. They, I attended that meeting in person. They got a day-long update on CAPERS and had some discussions about making recommendations to legislature on CAPERS. Everyone agrees that they need to make improvements to CAPERS three, it seemed from the conversation, but there's not much agreement about how to do that because of the price tag. CAPERS three is the version of the retirement program that anybody coming into the profession after about two thousand and fifteen is under and it's underperforming expectations and hampering recruitment efforts and retention efforts for younger teachers. So that's a conversation to continue watching. Also, leadership elections are happening and committee assignments are happening. Leadership elections happened last week for both the House and Senate. There are going to be changes in, in leadership in both chambers. New, new majority leader in the, in the Senate, Senate Vice President, some other changes. Committee assignments are beginning to come out. The House of Representatives has announced all of the committee assignments and chairs for the Republicans. We will have a new House Chair of the House Committee on Education. That will be Representative Susan Estes. There is a new Chair for the House K-12 Education Budget Committee. That's Representative Jason Getz. We're still waiting on Senate committee assignments for all the Senate committees for both parties and also the, the Democrats haven't made their committee assignments to the House committees yet either. So there's still some committee assignments to be made that we'll be watching. And then the State Board of Education meets tomorrow and Wednesday and it is anticipated that the Board, they heard the report on the Cellphone Task Force last month. It is anticipated that they will adopt their guidance at the meeting this week. So thank you.
That's all I have, that's probably enough.
I just have a couple of things. Thursday, the fifth, I went and helped in Dr. Barker's room at Billy Mills with a classroom assignment, which was a lot of fun. And then negotiations later that evening with Yolanda. And then a couple of items on consent. There's an item on there for the disposal of outdated uniforms that we have on there. And then we have two items for IT. One is for wireless access points where E-rate supported to, to purchase those with a financial contribution from the district of just over a hundred and two thousand dollars. And then renewal of network security software to help against Internet threats, malware and filtering Internet traffic for a cost of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
Thank you. I just want to recognize that it's really helpful to hear the reports from the committees, so from negotiations, from policy and from facilities. We've fallen into this and to hear the legislative report is helpful and it's a nice pattern. So thank you all very much. Okay, we'll move on to the approval. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education approve the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
Cadu Blackwood.
Yes.
Costello.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Gordon Ross.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Byers.
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero.
We're going to take a moment to recognize a retirement.
The board would like to thank Rhonda Rol for her five years of service and offer sincere appreciation for everything that she did for the district and for the students and staff.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of board policy J C A A, which is the cell phone and electric device policy. This is the second read, so we will vote this evening should the board choose to. And we have Dr. Swift with us today. And extend appreciation to Dr. Irvin and J C Roberson and Kristin Ryan for their assistance
Thank you. Thank you so much. Was there? Very good. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and of the community. Since our last meeting on November 25th, we've done a great deal of work to fine-tune the guidance of implementation in the schools. And we've worked with a number of groups, had good spirited conversations with students, and really are bringing tonight a set of guidance. And our communication will go out, of course, pending the board's vote, but we'll go out this evening with the expectations as well as all of the guidance, and really a full chapter on the rationale or why behind this change. So the change is really very simply stated, that as of January 6th, the Lawrence Public Schools will implement cell phone free instruction. And the goal of this change is really about one thing, and that is lifting up the teaching and learning that occur every day in our classrooms, and lifting that up by diminishing and removing as many distractions as possible. And in this day and age, the number one distraction is that of the cell phone. So the expectations are really very simple. At the elementary level, students will not have cell phones out at school at all. If their parents are sending one for safety or other reasons, that will remain in the backpack and not in the classroom. So then at middle school, really students' use of cell phones will not occur during the school day. There is one caveat at middle school that allows our principals to work with their teams and on occasion, if students are demonstrating their personal responsibility and ability to manage their devices and keeping them put away during the school day, on occasion, perhaps a lunch where they would celebrate being able to use their phones. But throughout the school day at middle school, for the most part, not having cell phones out. And then at the high school, we really are following a developmental, a progressive approach, because we know that our ability to manage the phone while it's on us is a life skill. And so at high school, the use of cell phones and personal devices is prohibited during class time. However, high school students, if they're able to manage their device, would have that latitude to check in on passing period or at lunch. And you know, when folks ask the most, number one, most commonly asked question, what are the consequences if students aren't able to meet the expectation? And you know, we really are going to spend the opening weeks of 2025 learning as a system together, because this is a significant behavioral and cultural shift, and we all recognize that. However, we've talked about it quite a lot, and at the end of the day, a student's ability to manage their device is a privilege. That if a student is unable to learn to be able to do that, and all of our supports and interventions really are not working, then that would end up as a forfeiture of the ability to manage one's own device. And we hope that that doesn't happen, because we really feel like if we're preparing students to go to college and for the real world, it's much better if they learn to manage them. So that's an overview. Our next steps are clear. We will be on a full court press, all of my team and all of our principal and all of our administrators in the district to support our principals. We've been in close contact with them. Many of them facilitated staff meetings over this past week where all of the information was delivered. But these next nine days, we will be on a full court press to share the information, to participate in ongoing education around the why. Because if we all remember how important it is, and members, I've placed a book at your table, that's one of the books that we'll use for our education efforts during January, February, and March. It's called The Anxious Generation, The Rewiring of Childhood. Because of technology, we will be looking at that book. We will be looking at screening the movie Screenagers. Free State High School has already reached out to host their January parent meeting as a screening of the movie Screenagers, so that they can introduce that information to their community. In fact, we've had outreach from all parts of town to host either a book talk or book club with the book or a screening of the movie. So we'll be doing a full court press. This is a community endeavor. It rises and falls on our classrooms, but it is a school and a community endeavor to support this cultural shift. Members, we will be out in schools this week to collect before data. We'll be walking classrooms and schools and counting the number of phones we see. We won't announce our presence because we want to get the real data. And then January, February, and March, we'll continue to take those data polls just to see that we're making positive progress and we're achieving that goal of a distraction in cell phone free instructional environment. I was recently talking to a colleague in another part of the country. They implemented district-wide in August, and I was inspired by his on-the-ground words, and they were this, that this move is a game changer for teachers who are committed to teaching and for students in their learning, academic growth, and their social emotional development as well. So I can't wait to continue to update you as we're here at this board table on our progress. We know that big, hard things like this are worth the effort, but we also know it will take quite a lot of effort on everyone's part to get from here to there. So with that, trustees, or members, I thank you, and I believe that covers our part of it, although I've got members of the team handy if you have questions.
Before I open up for questions, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points that came up last meeting. And one of them was that this is the beginning of this process. There'll be a review from the policy committee to see how the implementation is going and whether or not we need to refine the policy in terms of the way it's written now. And then the other piece I heard in terms of the evolution is that we're beginning to look at the utilization of screen times at the elementary level. Could you just speak to that real briefly before I open it up to questions?
Yes, forgive me, I intended to hit on elementary. What we're really hearing from our teachers in the classroom, from our principals, and it actually is the number one request among the hundreds of parents that we've heard from on the tour. And that is a focus on the reduction of screen time at the elementary level. So Director Roberson is engaging. The principals already have an action plan. I'll copy you all on that. To really engage in a thoughtful conversation with our teacher leaders, with our parents, with our principals. And our goal is by fourth quarter to bring forward some recommendations. We do want to use the power of technology to help students with skill building outside of school hours, if that's helpful. But we also want to ensure that we're not rewiring, as our research tells us, we have to be very careful with young students around the amount of screen time. So I can't wait to see the recommendations that come out of this study of the amount of screen time at elementary.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up for questions. And I'm going to start with Carol. Carol, do you have questions that you would like to pose now? You can also interject whenever, but I just don't want to forget you there.
I don't have so much a question, but I would just like to thank Mr. David Reber from Free State and Zachary Casey for bringing this to our attention back in June. This is something that has been coming up time and time again, and I'm so glad that it was teacher-initiated. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Carol. Board members that have questions, G R., others? Okay, I'll start with you, G R.
So I just want to, Dr. Swift first, I just want to thank you and your team for the work that you did after last time to take the feedback that you got and to rework both the guidance and the policy. I like the progression through the grades. So I like the policy as it stands. I like that, I like the mindset going into it, that it's, we're going to go into it and then we're going to review it as we go. And it's not set in stone, but it's, we're going to work on a cultural shift using this as a guide, which I like. The other thing that I would ask, if you're willing to take a feedback on something else that you said, while, and this would be for J C as well, when you're looking at elementary screen time, when you're working on that proposal, if that were to include a reduction of devices at the elementary level, would it be possible to explore taking the funding from those devices and turning them around to replace iPads with iMacs at the high school? If ultimately that was the direction that we went, I would love to see how that would play out.
Thank you so much.
So not really where we're going, but I saw an opportunity to bring it up.
Thank you.
I am also highly interested in that. So I appreciate the investigation and that. We've definitely heard from students that there might be benefit in reviewing that decision the board made, which had fiscal implications, but might have had negative educational ones as well. So I appreciate that you'll be looking at that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Can I get one clarification? I know there was an exception for, as medical reasons for cell phone. Can I get a more clarification on, is there a form that they need to fill out? Is there, I know if it's written in their I E P, but for the ones that don't have I E P, but they do have the continuous glucose monitoring devices that they need to have on and stuff like that, is there a medical form that needs to be filled out for the parents?
Thank you so much. It would be the same one that's in place for all of their accommodations, and by that I mean just making sure that that case person and the teacher is aware, the administrator is aware, and making sure that we have that noted in Power School. But we'll follow the same process, whether that's a 504, an I E P, or just simply an accommodation generally that we make. But it will be a process of conversation, and I think Kevin Harrell has helped us to understand, if that is not already an accommodation in an I E P or a 504, then we'll need to have that conversation. But for medical reasons, there would be no question that would be taken care of.
Thanks, Yolanda. Bob, did you have questions?
Actually, just more of a statement. I'd like to thank the staff for the work you've done. I think at our last board meeting, when we addressed this, there was definitely some incongruity between policy and our procedures. And I like, I usually say I like the sausage-making of this. I think people look at it and say, well, you wrote a policy and they don't match. This process is where we get them to match and come up with a policy that fits. So I really think that we're headed in the right direction. I think everyone needs to understand that this is not the end. It's simply the beginning on the road. This, to me, is a major systems change, which takes a lot of work. I think parents need to understand that their responsibilities will change as well, that you no longer can pick up your phone and call your student or your child and expect that they're going to answer that phone. The likelihood is not. They won't be. So I just want to thank everyone, and I hope families can deal with that. I think teachers will have some learning to do for some of us or some of them, because the reality is, this is a part of your classrooms of which you do the management of. There will be no additional staff managing classrooms around cell phones. It's basically a part of the teaching environment that you control.
Any other questions before I move to public comment?
Not so much a question, just I appreciate Bob's kind of pointing out that this is the process. You know, we actually really began looking at this as a policy committee. We started talking about this either at our April or May meeting. So we were very early on in this year talking about how we were going to have to address this. We had it on our agenda in June. By July, we had a draft going, but that was a working draft. And we asked our staff to take that and get feedback and help us figure out what the best way to do this work would be with the goal of this cell phone free instructional time. And I feel good that that process has resulted in us taking that feedback, adjusting our guidance, adjusting our policy, doing the work that as a board we need to do with our district leadership. So thank you to everyone for, you know, kind of coming together and making this a reality. I think it's very timely for our district to be adopting this tonight. It's, State Board is getting ready to adopt guidance for districts across the state tomorrow. We obviously saw that this was a need, and we're working on this on a timeline that is allowing us to adopt our policy and begin this work now, rather than waiting months more after that guidance has come out. And really, our policy aligns with that guidance in many, many ways. I do want to address, you know, one of the things that's in the State Board guidance that'll get written about this week is that they are recommending storage of phones not on the student's person. We considered that in our discussions, and I appreciate our district administration's guidance in terms of how we can make this work in our district in a way that meets multiple concerns and needs of different groups, while at the same time achieving the goal that we all share around improving the learning environment for our students, improving the teaching environment for our staff. So that's what I wanted to share, and I look forward to hearing the comments and the remainder of the board discussion. of the board discussion. Thank you.
Ready to hear a public comment?
One, Shannon just said something that reminded me of one other comment. We did, there is, through this process, whenever you're doing this type of participatory policymaking, you learned things that you weren't, that came up as part of the conversation. Like, for example, we maybe needed to look at the elementary screen time as well. The other thing that has emerged is this discussion around apps that are not, that we need for curriculum, that cannot be put on the iPad, and there's discussions around exceptions for cellphone use in those cases. I would ask the district to look closely at when those requests are made and to see what's the barrier to it being implemented on our device. Is it the, is it the device itself? Do we need a different device? Is that app something that is, is so expensive that it's difficult to have as part of the curriculum? And then to, to challenge the district to look at if there is a curriculum that is not going to be available to every student, because not every student has a particular device. What are adjustments that we need to make there? But I think in most cases, what we're going to find is that there is a workaround for teachers to continue to do the innovation that they're doing with technology and not have to water down their, their curriculum while still supporting every student that has the same access to an electronic device to be successful in their academic experiences. So I, I would like us to begin to look at where are those requests for exceptions? Why are those requests? And how can we accommodate those educators and getting those tools available to every student? Because I know that's what they want when I'm talking with them. Similar to GR's discussion around laptops, that's also been true around some applications. So I know the district's already looking at that, and I appreciate the work that you all are doing on that. I'd like to call, make time for folks that have come to, to speak. GR read the, the public comment. So when you come up to the podium, there'll be a, like a three-minute timer, and I'll raise my hand if, if we're getting close to that. So Jennifer Wilson, welcome. I'm glad you're here. Thanks. And if you can't get everything in in three minutes, we'll definitely, please stop us afterwards or send us an email or something if it doesn't get on in.
I just want to start out by saying I, I do have a head trimmer, so if you see me kind of do this, just stabilizing myself.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Yeah. Okay, so mine is completely commentary.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight regarding an issue that is pretty important for me. I had a lot to say, but honestly, cellphones are going to be banned. That's the way it is. So at this point, I'm just going to tell you that I had the privilege of observing kids in a middle school with the permission of a principal. And what I saw basically was, I saw kids on the iPads, 24/7. They didn't put them down. They were playing games on them. That has since been addressed. I did see two teachers on their phones. I saw one kid on their phone that checked their phone for the time. The passing in between classes in the hallway, I believe, is about three minutes to get to your next class. I didn't see a kid pull out a phone. I walked behind them. They thought I was a substitute teacher. They had no idea who my kid was, who I was. They thought I was a teacher. They didn't pull out their phones. They were trying to get to their next class. So I'm old school. I believe in books. I believe in lockers. I believe in winter coats being used and having a place for those winter coats, which we don't have lockers. I worry about with the screen time, as we're starting to notice with the younger kids, the learning retention. Are these kids actually learning? And I'm also worrying about them always being on the iPads. They're not writing, physically writing. Cursive is gone. My, my son, my student, his writing is atrocious. They don't practice writing enough. And I don't see a lot of the teachers, and this is in high school, I observed in my daughter's high school, all three of my children have gone to the Lawrence Public Schools. I don't see a lot of the teachers going out, reading books to the kids. Hey, what do you think of that? What do you, what's your favorite part? I don't see that engagement that we need with kids. And I think that the technology is taking that away from kids enjoying what they're learning and having an opinion. You know, you can ask the, the kids to write down their opinions, but they're gonna, they're gonna write down what the teachers want to hear. And sometimes it's okay to say, I don't like this book. I couldn't stand Homer, or Odyssey, all of that. I couldn't stand it. So I told my teachers that, and they worked with me. But I don't think we have that anymore. And I really think that's important. I think it's just something we should think about, middle school. Does that mean I'm one minute?
It's you. I apologize.
I'm over?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I apologize.
Appreciate your coming up and taking time with it.
So much.
Yeah, we appreciate your coming and, and observing your school. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Justin.
Yeah, if I could just piggyback on that, I think everything I just heard, I'm on board with. And I think there are more and more papers coming out, scientific papers, that show that the way that the nervous system engages with the screens is very different than the way that nervous systems engage with paper and pencil. That being said, I do want to say thank you to the school board and for Superintendent Swift for navigating through this. It's probably not as far as I would go, but I really do understand the pros and cons of all this. It's a very complicated issue. But I do hope that the school board remains amenable to reconsidering these policies going forward. And one other thing I think that is also worth considering is there's going to be a lot of data coming from different school departments across the country that are using yonder bags. They're using all different ways of actually maybe even keeping the phones off the kids for certain parts of the day, off of their physical body. And so I think, you know, keeping an eye on those results is going to be something that the school board should consider, because there's going to be a lot of experiments going on probably in the next six months to a year that are worth keeping an eye on. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your work on this issue. I'm going to ask now if there's a motion.
I'd be glad to make the motion if, if we are ready. Okay. Except that I apparently left the meeting. Just one moment, please, and I will be back there. There we go. Okay. Now I've got it. I move the Board of Education Adopt Board Policy, JCAA, Cellphones and Electronic Devices, following second reading.
On the second.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Gordon Ross.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Byers.
Yes.
Kuduh Blackwood.
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you, board members.
Kelly?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I didn't have any questions, but I didn't want to have a comment. So I, I wanted to thank Dr. Swift and all of the admin who worked tirelessly on this. I know it was not easy, and there was a lot of last-minute scrambling and changes. I think I said at the last meeting, I'm a proponent of, you know, an even stronger ban, but based off of, you know, leaving this to the experts, those who are with the feet on the ground, who are doing the work and understand it better than I do. I was willing to support this version of the policy, also knowing that we are going to continue to look at this. And that's really one of the things that I really appreciate. I feel like that hasn't always been the case in the past with different things that the, the school board has looked at or approved. And so I'm excited to show the community this opportunity where we are open to feedback and we are monitoring, and it's not a set it and forget it. It's a, we're going to see how this goes and see what adjustments need to be made on the go-forward, and then take that action and not just kind of let things fizzle out.
I appreciate that. I particularly appreciate that coming from you as you are on the Policy Committee, and now we will all hold you to keeping us honest that we will review this policy and look at, you know, do we need cellphones in middle school?
Absolutely.
For example. All right, thank you. Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break and come back at seven.
Going to call the meeting back toward. We will move on now to item 4.1, the approval of the contract for proximity learning. I'll ask Kristen Ryan and Leah Wisdom, are the administrators responsible for the report?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll go ahead, and then the team will be available if you all should have questions. Please take that down. We are talking this evening about a proximity tool. The board, you have the documents on the agenda, the board has been briefed on this. I want to be clear that our use of this is simply as a tool to support a particular group of students in their Spanish instruction over at West Middle School, where we have struggled through this fall to maintain highly certificated staffing in the classroom. We have been fortunate in that situation to have two very committed substitutes who are in relationship with the students. But it's important to us to have a highly qualified teacher. So the proximity tool allows us to bring that teacher virtually to the classroom and to continue with our substitutes who have the relationship on the ground to continue the work in the classroom. I want to be clear that I believe, we believe deeply in the value of world language. That is why we're taking this unusual step to ensure that our students get to finish their spring semester. We believe here in this University Town of Lawrence that every student should be proficient in a second language. And we believe in that so strongly that we're bringing to you tonight a tool that is a step beyond what we would normally ask for or normally do. I also believe deeply, as I know you do, in the value, the transformative value and power of a passionate teacher of world language. I was one of those, and there's nothing better than having that highly qualified, deeply committed, amazingly passionate teacher of world language. It transforms students' lives. So I want to be clear, members of the board, this tool this evening is about doing the right right thing for a group of students, a full caseload of students for this spring semester. But it in no way is demonstrative of any lesser commitment to having the very best teacher in front of our students. So you will notice that the motion reads up to $35,000 and that is the cost if we were to continue through the end of the school year. However, we will continue to vigorously recruit. I'm looking over at the team, they're out every week trying to find great, passionate teachers. We will continue to recruit and we hope that we'll only have to do this for a short period of time. And we'll keep you posted and updated. I appreciate the support of this team. I will follow up with a conversation with our Spanish teacher team in the district because I feel so strongly about our efforts to continue to offer quality language and I also want to solve this problem in this moment. So we have our team on hand if there are questions. But this is a commonly used tool across the country when you run into that situation where you, your qualified teacher is not readily available. Thank you.
Board members, are there questions pertaining to this item?
Is this something that we looked at also for the German when we, was that one of the conversations there?
Yes. We have, yes, thank you, Member Costello. We've looked at it a few times and really are also looking if we're going to be in this position on occasion, perhaps leveraging through Lawrence Virtual School an approach from within our own team that would be similar to proximity, but it would be our own folks. So a number of ways to go at this and of course, our top and first priority is always to have that fully certified teacher right there in the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that rather than walking away from a commitment to provide language instruction, we are trying to problem solve a way to continue providing it.
Yes.
I think that's really, really important. I will add that, and I believe it was at the last month's state board meeting, they presented some of this data on teacher vacancies and one of the areas that they mentioned in their list, in addition to the ones that we hear about a lot, which are the middle and high school science and special education, language teachers.
Yes.
Was one of the areas where they identified a statewide challenge in recruiting certificated instructors. So I just wanted to share that context. This is not a struggle that is just happening here in our community. It is happening all over our state. You know, it's, the teacher shortage is very real and there are certain areas that are definitely hit harder. So thank you for trying to problem solve this in a way that will continue to provide high-quality opportunities for students.
I also appreciate the dialogue that you'll be having with the Spanish teachers themselves and other world language teachers so that we can see, learn from them, what are some ways we might problem solve. I'm sure HR has been working on that as well. And appreciate all of your efforts to continue to prioritize getting a teacher into the classroom.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Oh, wait, you got something?
Okay, maybe my brain just works differently than everybody else's because I've got different ideas that's going through my head. Now, I know how we looking for qualified teachers and things like that. And this is something that we are really lacking for our students, you know. So have we reached out to families? You know, you know how we're trying to do community engagement to get the ball rolling? Have we reached out to families to see, I know we need certified, qualified teachers that teach, but some of the languages that we're trying to teach some of these families are proficient in it. So I know there's, it might be a red tape and hoops we got to jump over and things like that, but to get the community more involved in helping us teach their children, could we maybe explore that avenue or see if maybe we can get a family member that is proficient in German to come and hold an after-school course with the, come of the kids or something like that, just to see, I mean, to see how many students are really interested in learning German, you know? So that's just how my brain works. I do apologize.
Absolutely. And Ms. Ryan actually was recently with a group of Spanish speakers and shared back with me exactly what you're saying is really that outreach to them. I don't know if you want to, Ms. Ryan, give a response or, but there are requirements for the classroom teaching, but certainly to do enrichment or after-school.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. And I do think it is that balance of meeting that state licensure for during the school day, but then that opportunity to provide students additional community support specifically with some of our groups in Lawrence. Somos is one of them in terms of supporting our students, so yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve a contract with proximity learning in an amount not to exceed $35,000.
I have a second.
Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Cadoo Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay, we're going to move on to the athletics facility study. And Dr. Engelbrich is here. And yeah, welcome.
I'll go ahead and finish it. You started.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
President Jones, board members, Dr. Swift, thank you very much for this opportunity. It is an interesting, challenging, and exciting time to come to you and talk to you about this study that we're working on. I need to begin by telling you the importance it is to realize that over the past 10 to 15 years, a great deal of great work has been done in our district at each and every one of our buildings. And our reports should no way reflect negatively upon that work. Our reports are showing that some of our facilities have worn out and we're beginning to identify those. We began that entire process four years ago by looking at the things that were the most obvious, roofs leaking, potholes in the parking lot, curbs and sidewalks that were not functional. And we have been working on those and we will continue to work on those. But the past year, the board has asked us to begin to look at some other things. We began with our fine arts study, our performing arts study, and it opened our eyes to a number of things that needed to be addressed. It opened our eyes to things that would benefit our students and our staff, not only in the co-curricular activities, but during the school day. In the very same way, when we began the athletics study, we were thinking we would be looking mostly at athletic improvements. The facilities are all used for athletics. But our staff came back and talked to us about how this would impact their classroom experience and their students' classroom experience also. We hope that you see some similarities between the two studies. We've attempted to do them in the same way and we will continue doing this in this manner so that there are those common threads and things begin to align and are easier to pull together. In this study, we did conduct a visual survey, comparisons of, and comparison of facilities with our neighboring districts. I've already mentioned, but all of these facilities are used both as classroom and co-curricular venues, things that we need to keep in mind at all times. Our gymnasiums are not just a Friday night gym. Friday during the day, they are a classroom. What we have done, we have conducted site visits, we've asked for staff feedback, one-on-one during those site visits. We've then provided that information back to the staff, allowed them to give us feedback on it. We've opened up online electronic capabilities of staff providing us input. And the last couple of weeks, we've held two sessions where administrators and staff members have been able to either in-person or online come to us and talk to us about individual items. Each of those has been very, very important to this process. You have a very long report this evening. If we chose to go page by page, I don't think you want us to do that. You also have the benefit of having the gentleman here this evening who put that report together, Doug Loveland. Doug put together the final draft, the final copy of both our performing arts study and is working on the final copy of this study, again, helping us to keep them a common theme and helping him to work through the process of the presentation. I think you're going to find that at the end of this evening, what we find out through all of Doug's information is we need to do some prioritization. And we are going to be at that point where in all good dissertation studies, you come to the conclusion, further research and study is needed. So Doug, if you would like to begin, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to come speak with you again. I do have a hard copy for myself of the full report in case I get detailed questions from anyone in particular named Ms. Kimball. Because that does tend to happen. But I have a much briefer set of notes that I'd like to buzz through on the presentation. If you want to interrupt me while I'm presenting, it is not going to rattle me, fear not.
I think you might get those questions from Ann, too.
I was just about to say, I thought he was going to say Ann Costello, so.
Just speculate. So thank you for allowing me to come talk to you about this again. So I want to reiterate what Dr. Engelbrich said. We had participants from really three different groups, district staff, my staff at ACI Boland Architects. And in this instance, again, we brought in a specialty consultant. As with the Performing Arts Center study, I will be the first to admit that although we have some expertise, there are people that are more expert in this topic than we are. So I brought in a group called VSR Design led by Vance Rebka. Please don't ask me to spell Vance's last name, I've known him for 25 years and I can't spell it. VSR is a specialty sports landscape company. They have assisted me in the design of facilities around the region. And in this instance, he helped us evaluate the landscape architecture, stadium, sports specific components of those outdoor elements. My team took care of the architectural elements, outdoor and indoor. As with the Performing Arts Center study, we did essentially six major things. We did a site evaluation, we did do an electronic staff survey that we left open for about a week. We did a first draft report that we distributed to the same team that had access to that survey. And then we did a series of forums to give them an opportunity to come in and give us some detailed feedback. I want to reiterate, both when we did our in-person evaluations and when we had the staff forum, we had great interactions with LPS staff. In the, in the site review and we're sort of invading their space, they were courteous, answered questions, gave us feedback live. In the forums, they came having reviewed the report, which is fairly long, and with detailed questions. I'll be very frank, on that final version, the last page, the last two pages, is the sort of give and take of those staff forums. And you can see, we made corrections to the report based on the feedback we got to staff. They corrected some assumptions we had made, they corrected our interpretation of what we saw in a couple of places. That is incredibly valuable to make sure that we're being accurate. I've got a sort of an asterisk slide on here that I did not have last time. And that is that for a study, where this study ended up going, it was very difficult for us to just produce a list of costs, unlike the Performing Arts Center study where the result said things like, we should consider revising the sound system at an auditorium. That's a fairly discreet project, could be fairly easily priced. The recommendations in here, as you've seen in the report, and I'm going to talk you through here in the next few, are a little more nebulous. Line items can be combined with other line items, maybe for some economy of scale, maybe for some successful dual use. So it's a little harder for me to give you an agenda of costs. At the very end, I did give you some high-level costs that we've been seeing around the Kansas City metropolitan community. I can identify where we got those costs from if you want to ask, just to let you understand the order of magnitude for the sorts of things that we are describing. So let's start with the middle schools. We did do two major activities. We did our own field assessment of your facilities, condition of things, sizes of things, numbers of things. We also did a peer review study for Shawnee Mission, for DeSoto, for Gardner. It was a visual survey, Google Map evaluation, a little bit of working knowledge in those districts already. For Olathe, I got a sat down, a sit-down with the Director of Facilities, Travis Pelangi, who's a former colleague, he's an architect. He was very generous with my, with his time. We went through a checklist for both high school and middle school to sort of identify fairly specifically where Olathe is going with their facilities. And there's some differences. Some of those differences are district choices and some of those differences are just prioritization. The peer study for the middle schools was favorable. Your facilities in terms of quantity, what you have, what you've chosen to put in place for your middle schoolers, for those teachers, for those coaches, is essentially equivalent to what other districts are doing. The concerns of the middle school are wear and tear. We're starting to see some fairly significant wear and tear at the track complex across the board. They're of a similar age and they're wearing to the point where we're starting to be sort of end of life. And, and one of those symptoms, if you're walking, getting a little fitness in at one of the middle schools and you're walking those orange tracks and you start to see the black coming up through, that is the top, what we call structured spray actually wearing all the way off and the next layer, the black mat coming through. That's just a sign that you're getting towards life end. Couple of places, we had some places where we identified some slope questions, nothing tragic, but some areas that would, if we decided to improve those tracks, we would recommend we investigate a little bit more. Tennis specifically is at end of life. And you're going to hear this when I talk about the high schools as well. We are getting to the point where patching is no longer anything more than a two-year repair. You would like to get five to seven years out of a, out of a crack patch, we are past that on your tennis courts across the district. At the high school level, their, their reports are a little more alarming. They've got more competitive nuance to sort of monitor. But speaking, speaking for the middle schools, we're getting to the point where the middle school tennis courts are just sort of beyond really successfully being patched. Future items that did come out of those peer reviews. One, Olathe talked a lot about being on a maintenance and repair cycle. They talked a lot about how they had spent a lot of time getting organized so that they could keep track of the expiration of items and just get on the treadmill of keeping their facilities in the condition they would hope to keep them at. And there was, there was a lot of, of back and forth between me and Mr. Pelangi about their efforts to get on a cycle, if you will. The other one is, is that they are beginning to consider putting turf at their middle schools. One, multipurpose field, I think we can all close our eyes and assume that that's in the middle of a track. But one, multipurpose field per middle school campus to give them an all-weather surface for PE, for track and field, for community use, if they decide to go back to use, community use at their campuses. And, and just having something that they can count on as long as it's not actively raining or lightninging. That's one of those things that's creeping to the north from Texas and Oklahoma and getting into us in Kansas. I know that similar communities to yours, El Dorado specifically, when El Dorado did its new middle school about 15 years ago, they put multipurpose football at their middle school. But that was in service of a particular extracurricular activity. So these were the findings of the middle school. I will say this, indoor didn't get mentioned because the indoor facilities are in great shape. You've got two gymnasium spaces, you've got good seating capacities, the facilities are in good condition. We did note, and you'll see in the report, we did note at Liberty Memorial Central Middle, the older of the two gyms, there's some roofing issues that they've been addressing through roofing that are visible on the inside, got noted by my reviewer. through roofing that are visible on the inside, got noted by my reviewer. But generally, at the middle school, the indoor facilities are, are in good condition, stand up well to what your peers have. So let's talk about the high schools a little bit. The high schools identified two really major items. The first is, it has become the norm in the Kansas City region to begin having true video both in, at both indoor and outdoor venues. I am not, it is not beyond sort of one location indoor and one location outdoor. So for example, if you've got an easily identified main competition gymnasium, it may have a video board in it. If you have a main track soccer football competition field, it will likely have a video installation or they are in progress of installing it. Shawnee Mission has them in place, Olathe has them in place, Blue Valley bid them last spring and I believe is under, sort of underway on that project. It's in their facility committee notes from March. So, it's coming. The second is the number of available PE athletic spaces, both indoors and outdoors. Starting outdoors, one of the things that I got corrected on by the, by the staff members who were in our review meetings. We had looked at the facilities you had, the high schools, and we had counted all the areas that looked sized for football soccer. And so if you close your eyes and envision Free State, you've got the main stadium field, you've got the soccer field to the north, and you've got that large grass area to the east of the soccer field. If you're really, really looking at it, you've got the grass area behind the press box at the stadium where they do their throw sports. In the review meeting, we were corrected that staff has been directed not to use the grass field east of soccer. Is this just not maintained or ready for real PE athletics? So they asked us to correct our assessment because they're not allowed to use that field. Tempting as it looks on a map or when you're walking around the complex, it is not one of the fields that they use. And so that, that was a, that was one of those places of input where we went back and forth for 15 minutes, making sure that we'd heard the right thing when they told us, it's tempting as it looks, they don't use it and they're, they're directed not to. However, what we are seeing, so outdoors, we're generally seeing you as sort of one planned utilized outdoor football soccer sized surface short at each of the two high school campuses. That's freshman football, that's junior varsity soccer, if you're not using the track stadium for soccer practice because you've got one all-weather surface on your campuses specifically for soccer. Remembering that boys soccer is up against boys football every fall, there's a, there's a practice field shortage a little bit. In the spring, girls soccer is up against track and field and so track is all over the, the main complex. And soccer has, has really just got one field to practice with, there's not a swing field. Indoors, it has become common in your peer districts to have a third major indoor PE and athletics venue. That might be an oversized wrestling room, that might be a third, a second auxiliary gym, essentially a third gymnasium feeling space. I will tell you right now, Olathe has, has those spaces. Shawnee Mission has been working on those spaces and I believe just completed them. They were doing some significant work at North, I believe, to complete some of that effort. Blue Valley is adding auxiliary gyms right now, including one on my son's high school. The other thing that I will say is that those are going on as storm shelters to comply with the changes in the building code. I cannot add a substantial space to really any of your educational occupancies at this point without starting to address designed storm hardened spaces on your schools. And that's, that's a building code element, it's a city level element. I was just checking the building code before I said that at the mic. But changes in the recent building code are requiring us to give you storm hardened spaces. And what is happening is that folks are using the auxiliary gymnasium, gymnasium additions, they're making them out of precast, they're making them storm hardened, and it's allowing them to serve both masters. Got a big space, big enough for their entire high school campus, that is a storm shelter as well. Other concerns that were highlighted at the high school level, wrestling was a big one, and this did catch us off guard, and this was the second major item that we got from staff. Boys and girls wrestling is the same season. And for obvious reasons, they're not practicing together. And so what has happened is with the introduction of girls wrestling, they've doubled the number of wrestling facilities that they need. They have concerns about mat damage because specifically at Lawrence High, wrestling spaces get used by a lot of programs, they get worried about their fairly expensive mats getting torn up, they get worried about mat storage. But at both of your high schools, girls wrestling is having to happen off campus at a rented facility because they just don't have somewhere to do it on campus. Track and tennis was not positive, again, fairly similar. Track surfacing, there's nothing wrong specifically from a design standpoint, it's just getting to the end of life. Tennis, same thing, there's nothing wrong specifically, however, they are getting beyond end of life and patching is again, a one to two year solution at best. There are some stadium conditions, you've got those landscape block stadiums at both high schools. It's getting to be time to do some maintenance on those. We're getting reports of pavers being dislodged, of some of those retaining walls heaving just a little bit. There's some concern that we might need to invest a little bit of maintenance at those two stadiums, in the grandstands at both campuses, and at baseball and softball at both campuses. And then, the press box at Free State was specifically highlighted, we had already taken a look at that and had already sort of seen what was going on there, similar to what we did a year and a half ago at the Oath, the South End Building that we rewrapped. We're having some deterioration at the press box at Free State, it's of the same age, generation and construction. The last one that I will say is that the condition of the gymnasium spaces generally came up at the high schools. And the quote that I got from one of the administrators was, when we invite alumni back to Lawrence High, they walk into the West Gym and it feels exactly like it was when they were students, because it is. There's not been an opportunity to do much in the way of improvement at the gymnasium attached to the Carl Knox Auditorium. The main gym at, at Lawrence High, fairly similar. Just a general, the scoreboard is getting to be out of date, there's not a lot of technology, certainly not the technology density we see in new gymnasiums. They did bring up seating capacity, that's something we're going to continue to study. Architecturally, I would say that the seating capacity at Lawrence High is okay, but the reporting that we're getting and from the athletics group generally, is that for the crosstown games, Lawrence High does not have enough seats. And there's potentially some solutions to that, but the floor plans would say they have X number of seats, I've actually got that in the report. But the reporting that we got is that they actually can actually seat fewer than that, a couple hundred fewer than that. Let's talk about the staff survey for a second. Unlike the Performing Arts Center study, we did the staff survey at the end of the process. With the Performing Arts Center study, we used it to gather specifics about how they use the space, types of performances, so that the professionals could go in and evaluate it knowing what their goals were. With athletics, we did it the other way around. We went in and evaluated it, it let us customize the survey a little bit better, let us be a little more precise in the questions that we asked. We got good responses. I will say, we got 25 responses, the average response time was 41 minutes. So Doug needs to write some shorter surveys. Nineteen of the 25 responses were at the high school buildings. We did get at least one response from every single building, but nineteen of the responses were from people who self-identified at either Free State or Lawrence High. So, the, the big high level items here, quality and condition of scoreboard equipment came up again, quantity of gymnasium spaces at the high schools came up again, lack of video came up again. The big ones that I also wanted to point out was, we got a couple of comments about the difficulty in controlling the impact outside groups have on the facilities. You do have a different rental, you have the rental policy that you have, other districts handle it differently. But the concern from the staff members was, they're not staffed to be able to supervise those outside groups using the venues in the evening, and there's just an undercurrent of concern, things aren't put back the way they would like them put back, sure. But I think that the other undercurrent of concern is just an anxiety about expensive equipment being mishandled or damaged inadvertently because we're not staffed to be able to supervise them while they're there. The other one that came up was that outside of your main stadiums, there's no broadcast capability. So I'll tell you as a softball parent of many years, what that means is you've got a parent volunteer with an unlimited cell phone plan, turning on their data and broadcasting the softball game, hopefully with a camera so I can watch from home or work. But you don't have much in the way of IT or support at those outer venues, soccer, baseball, softball, you really don't have the capability to let parents of those sports see that remotely, grandparents, et cetera. And then there is a little bit of a disparity between Free State and Lawrence High, we didn't get all the way to the bottom of it, but it feels like there's been some donations at Free State that have not happened at, at Lawrence High. And so there's some, there's some technology differences between the two high schools in the gym and in the football stadiums. The rest of this is fairly normal. Outdoor storage, tennis conditions got mentioned multiple times, track conditions got multiple, mentioned multiple times. Overuse of facilities equipment, it was very interesting, I got a different tweak on that than I've gotten in other places. The concern was that some of the equipment is donor funded or sponsor funded, and that the, having to use it really heavily just makes them anxious that they're going to wear out things that were generously donated or funded by outside groups quickly. It was a tweak from, from your team that I had not gotten in other places. So, summary, there are some major items. Gymnasium spaces are major items. There are some major items that compare poorly to the peer districts that we identified, which was your conference opponents. To really give you a master plan on items that significant, we're going to need some, either some additional direction or some additional study. And, and the reason I would say that is, if you close your eyes and you envision Free State and you decide to make an addition, I could probably close my eyes and fairly easily identify how to do that. The puzzle is very different at Lawrence High. The puzzle is very different at Liberty Memorial than it would be at West. So your buildings are unique, some of your buildings are closer to an urban school setting like I would find in Kansas City, Missouri. Some of yours are closer to a suburban setting from a site and space standpoint like I would find in a Blue Valley or Olathe. So to really give you site by site recommendations, even a couple of options would take some, some more study. But, and, and the other piece is, it just generates a massive list. And I'm, I was, I did not feel comfortable showing up here and giving you a massive list just to prove I could. But, immediate concerns, consistent immediate concerns, track conditions, tennis conditions, some grandstand issues, the press box at Free State, and some grandstand issues at softball, baseball. And then in the sort of zero to five, more nebulous time period, I think a, a community conversation about where you want to go with the high school gymnasium PE space count. And I keep going to PE space because some of that might not look like a gym. Some of it may look like a different type of PE space. Athletics and PE equipment conditions, it came up, some of the fitness equipment is starting to age and may require some reinvestment, those types of things. And then AV capabilities at both high schools. Just to give you some order of magnitude cost for this, and I'm going to identify where these came from as I go. When we talk about a fairly basic auxiliary gym addition on a high school that is a storm shelter as well, Blue Valley has those going on right now, Blue Valley West bid in the spring of 2024, it's under construction right now, at about $6.2 million, so eight million would be your, your, your total project cost, your, your full bucket to do a project. That is a box and a neck. Very basic auxiliary gym storm addition. They've also bid some more complex weight room, wrestling room type additions at one of their high schools. It came in the 4.2 range, so smaller total project cost, lower, different type of project. Track resurfacing, various districts are doing that from time to time, including some quotes you got from McConnell. Surface only about $375,000. If we have to start talking about the asphalt condition and getting down into that asphalt base layer, the, the start value goes up. Tennis complex, six courts, Blue Valley West High School bid in the spring of 2024, bid price $640,000 to $700,000. So for a six court complex, you're, you're getting awfully close to a million dollars if we're doing it a year later, and we're trying to capture all those soft costs. I'm trying to give you budgetary numbers and not construction numbers. And then athletic building reskinning and renovation, potentially press box or something similar to that, these costs are where we were on the Oath when we bid it 18 months ago, with a little bit of inflation and the soft costs added on.
And just to clarify Doug, on the tennis complex, we would have, we have two, we have one at each of the high schools and we have the same size or slightly smaller at the four middle schools.
You have-
Two courts at the middle schools, right?
Each of the middle schools.
Okay.
You have six at Free State and-
Eight at Lawrence High?
At Lawrence High.
Okay.
And I desperately want to look down at my cheat sheet here and make sure I got that right, but I'm pretty sure I got that right.
You're right.
It's interesting that, one of the things that did come up is the inability to host tennis regionals. You can't host it on a six court setup, you really need eight at a minimum. And one of the concerns was your current eight court setup doesn't have, is it broken upright to be able to use all eight courts at the same time? Because you've got to walk across courts to get to the next court and you can't do that while it's in competition. I asked very specifically about using the city's courts, because the city has a nice complex over at the Rock Chalk Rec Center. And the response I got was, it's hard, not that you can't, but that it's hard. You have to reserve it six months in advance, they literally set an alarm and wait until six months and one minute away from the event that they're hoping to schedule, and they try and snatch up a reservation because it is a little challenging. So, it can be done, but it's not without difficulties.
And am I wrong in thinking that Kasia actually schedules the dates and locations for that a year in advance?
Year in advance, yeah.
Okay.
So, that is what I have, I am ready for questions.
Start with questions. Okay, go ahead, GR.
I just had a couple. Thank you Doug for that, that was just as informative as the fine art study, so I appreciate the work and the time and, and the energy, and also thank staff that participated and, and gave you the, the data that, that you needed to work it. So, I've, I've, basically I have two questions. So, one is when, when you were working through specifically the comparison piece, do, so I'm going to ask you your opinion because I know that you'll freely give it. Do you have any feedback or opinion on, as, as we move forward as a district, on our district policy and culture for community use and wear and tear versus what you found in comparison districts? So I'll let you answer that first and then I'll, that's my second one.
I, as a taxpayer in my local school district, I appreciate the ability to go walk on a track when I need to get some fitness in, or that my kids have always played rec basketball in the local middle school. It's easy, it's convenient in my neighborhood. What I will say is, all of those activities are supervised. And so I think an attitude that is open-minded towards allowing a community-funded facility to be used by the community probably has to be accompanied by the ability to supervise your facilities to ensure that the folks who are borrowing them know how to operate them, can operate them, can make an adjustment if they need to. Because I'll, I'll also tell you this, the difference between fifth grade basketball and eighth grade basketball is a couple of feet on that goal. And even, you know, not everybody even knows how to raise and lower the goal, and it varies from model to model. And so when we think about volleyball being mechanically operated more and more often, coming down from the ceiling, when we talk about adjustable height goals on- when we talk about adjustable height goals on even something as simple as basketball practice for fifth graders, the ability to have a staff member there who can make that adjustment for them instead of leaving them on their own makes a big difference.
Okay. Larry, do you have anything?
I think we would be very short sighted if we asked the community to allow us to use public funds to improve facilities and then say, oh, you can't use them. I, I do think in talking with some people, one of the areas that I think Doug touched on this is the supervision of the facilities. We need to find a way that we can have our facilities supported when a community group is using them. We need to have people there that know how to adjust the goals, know how to adjust the heat, know how to take care of a problem if it comes up and that they're dedicated in there during that entire event. The other thing that we're finding difficult, and I will put together a recommendation for this. Our staff, we're talking predominantly our custodial staff, they work an awful lot. And they get to a point in the year where time and a half on a Saturday, all day long, they start to look at, I need a Saturday off, I need a break. And we need to find ways to continue to work around that, support them, give them the time that they have off, but also make it well worth their time if they're coming in. Some of those people are very, very dedicated and will come in completely worn out because they know the community needs to use the facility and we appreciate that.
I picked on my basketball volleyball friends for just a second there, but I can also pick on my own sport. I can pick on my soccer friends. One of the detail items inside the report is that the corner kick areas and the, the goal mouth and things like that on the turf soccer fields are what I think the consultant called it kicked out. So you've got that carpet and you've got all the rubber infill on that carpet. And what happens, and it happens on pitching mounds, pitching circles in softball, it happens in batter's boxes. It happens at the heavy use areas on football and soccer. You get that rubber moved out, you don't replace it. What happens is you start attacking the carpet. You start wearing the structure of the actual turf. And so baseball coaches and softball coaches are instructed to go out every third inning and sprinkle more rubber in those heavy use areas. They're instructed to use mats when they're practicing in the batter's boxes and the catching boxes so that they're not digging out that rubber constantly and attacking the carpet. That's tough to tell a biddy soccer, remind a biddy soccer coach to go do. And I was a biddy soccer coach. I had other things on my mind.
Gotcha. Okay. My second question more is probably for Larry. You know, as we, as we look at, you know, I, you know, you mentioned it right when we started about, you know, at the end of this, it probably will need more, more time and more study. But you know, as we look at the fine art study and then as we look at this study and as we start to talk about prioritization, you know, all of this falls under capital outlay. And you know, we have an existing five year capital outlay plan that is set now with projects. Have you thought through or, or had conversations at all about as we start to prioritize this, how do these things fit into the existing capital outlay plan as it exists today?
As it exists today, we would be reacting to emergency situations. We have damage to a turf field right now. We respond, we react. We need to be proactive and start doing just what Doug told us, treating that field, rebuilding the rubber within that field more often throughout the year. I think now we do it once or twice a year. We probably need to look at the possibility of developing a method to do that every week and to check our fields. In terms of the big picture, our capital outlay budget cannot support the big picture. When we look at the needs just out of the performing arts study, eight and a half million dollars, it would take us years and years to start getting down that road. You could compare it very favorably to the roofing work that we've been doing. We've been doing a great deal of roofing work every year and we're getting closer and closer to not having huge sections of roof that are leaking. But we still have roofs that we need to take care of over the next several years. And guess what's going to happen to those roofs that are 21 or 22 years old in the next three years? They're going to catch up and they're going to be our next problem roof going on. Again, great deal of great work has been done in the district. This is not unusual when you talk to districts about infrastructure. We look at the, the wall itself, the ceilings, the floors. This evening, beautiful room that we're in, a thermostat needed to be reset because, because of building automation systems that are extremely old. That's what we're looking at now. Are those things that are behind the walls, those things that we keep covering up a little bit and we respond to in the last minute? I would also say that I think there are other areas that this has brought to mind that we need to look at. When we start talking about the co-curricular areas, what curricular areas do we have that we know we have some problems in and we could use a facelift or that infrastructure rebuild? Art classes, music classes, home economic classes, the foods classes particularly. One area that I think we have a great deal that hasn't been addressed in recent years is our CTE program. That's no one's fault. That's all just things finally catching up with us. Programs that were well funded, taken care of, funding has shifted, funding has changed. We're now to the point that we need to make sure that the infrastructure we have in there is correct. The other thing Doug I think has alluded to, and he'll tell me if he didn't. But we need to do this study comprehensively. If we're putting a new addition on a building for a wrestling gymnasium, what else does that require? Let's take it all the way back to the service entries, to the network needs there, all of the needs that are there and not just build a building for wrestling or revamp a track. He talked about the tracks and what is the subsurface like? We have to look at that surface under the running surface prior to putting hundreds of thousand dollars into the running surface. And that's where people sometime don't understand why we're doing things. But if we put a new track down, we want to get the full life expectancy out of that track that we're paying for. We don't want to be penny wise and dollar foolish here.
Thank you.
Again, I, when I'm thinking about this, we, I know we just had a recent cold snap and we had a lot of furnace type issues around the district. When I look at this and I look at the performance arts study and what I'm seeing is we have a lot of issues that are not related to mishandling things, but are more related to age. Because I was on the original board that approved a lot of the remodeling in, in our buildings. And that was around 2013. And we upgraded from boilers to heat pumps. And which was a great upgrade. The reality however is the utilization is different on a, so that what you end up with is things aging. And I think right now for me, my question is we have so much that we need done and not enough capital outlay to cover it. I don't know that you can prioritize it with as much as we, we have setting here. Because when you talk to me about a roof and we have 10, 15 years of going through to go through a cycle, by the time you finish that last one, the one you started with is having problems and now you need to repair it. So, so I guess where I'm at is with all the stuff we need done, you have an idea of how we get to an end. Because I don't, I'm sitting here going, going, you know, if our tracks, tracks and our tennis courts are in poor condition, they're not going to get any better in two years, even if we slap a patch. All that'll mean is it'll be worse. So it's, I'm more of the one, one that would say if we need to use them, then we need to fix them, figure out what it's going to cost and let's get a plan to get it done. I think my answer to you would be yes. As we started four years ago with where are our worst problems? Take care of the worst first and then move forward. We need to look at that in a number of areas. Doug and I know of an organization that's getting ready to do just over 12 million dollars of roofs this summer. If I brought that type of proposal to you, I would ask you upfront to ask me some tough questions. If we do 12 million dollars worth of roof work this summer and hit a large percentage of our roofs with new roofs, what's going to happen in 22, 23 years from now? We're going to be right in the same position. We need to put all of these things, again, the worst things first, the prioritization, but then put them on an ongoing rotation. When we put this entire package together, it may need to be more than five years. Some of the things, once we get them in place, roofs, with a proper care, we can get 20 to 25 years, maybe even a little bit more out of them. But we need to take care of those roofs. Nobody sees roofs. So out of mind, out of, out of sight, out of mind. But we need to put that ongoing maintenance consideration in.
Okay, I'm not going to require you to pull out your written report, I hope. I just, in looking through the written report, I just wanted to get some clarification from you because you did mention the peer groups or the peer districts that you looked at. Shawnee Mission, Olathe was a deep dive, DeSoto, Gardner. When I had looked through the report and I might have missed it, I didn't see Blue Valley, but you mentioned Blue Valley. So I was just curious, did you kind of look at Blue Valley in the same depth that you looked at Shawnee Mission, for example?
I'm a Blue Valley parent.
Okay.
I'm a Blue Valley West parent. I can't miss the construction. And I have a freshman in college who last year was a senior at Blue Valley High School. I couldn't miss the construction then either.
Okay.
I know them fairly well because I've been involved.
Okay, so you had that context to kind of inform, okay. I was just, I was just wondering if there was something about Blue Valley that caused you to de-emphasize looking at, at their facilities?
They weren't a conference opponent. We, we really identified the, the venues that your students are playing in.
Shawnee Mission, Olathe, okay.
For basketball, soccer, football as that peer group.
Is, that is completely understandable and makes a whole lot of sense.
We'll say this, Blue Valley publishes everything from their finance committee. So they are a nice spot for architects to go get some data because they publish it.
Okay. You mentioned the challenges that our staff have identified with girls and boys wrestling. I know that wrestling for girls has, the interest in that sport and participation has skyrocketed probably over the, even just the last six or seven years. What are, what are, what have our peer districts done to address the competition and practice needs that you saw?
They're kind of all in the same spot. The challenge with wrestling is that it is in the same timeframe as basketball. And so all of your indoor venues are full as a, as a high school ecosystem. So all the districts are struggling. There's some split practice times that I, I think I see on school websites, which used to be the response to swimming and diving. You know, my friends practice swimming and diving at 6:00 AM. And so there's, there's some split venue ideas. I will say Lawrence High does struggle more than Free State. Free State has a designated wrestling area. Lawrence High uses the mezzanine on the west gym. And other sports are in and out of there. It's not really something they can put some doors on, protect their mats. So Lawrence High is struggling a little bit more than Free State regardless of the gendering of the sports.
Is this where the third gym conversation really becomes important?
It's where the third activity space conversation. I'm going to be really careful not to call this a gym because the solution might not be a gym. The solution might be a, a multi-sport, dance, wrestling, aerobics, fitness complex that is well suited to be wrestling for at least one gender or wrestling for both genders, coupled with some lockering space, coupled with adequate storage, coupled with some of those other things. That's why I'm, I'm not trying to be cagey. The solution might not be, might not walk in and look like a gym to my grandfather.
That makes a lot of sense. And then you also have the instructional component for
And the instructional component did come up. There is a difficulty getting through the instructional day with enough spaces to teach the different courses that we would all lump in our head as PE in the facilities that you have at the high schools right now. There's just, it's, it's, it's tough. Lawrence High has the added complication that to get to the west gym or to the auditorium, you have to go outside.
So GR actually asked the third question I had, which was kind of this, this prioritizing and can we do, how much of any of this can we really do in capital outlay versus needing to do some other kind of planning? So the last thing I want to say is a comment, not a question, which is that from what you have presented and what we've heard with the facilities, the fine arts facility study and the, the many conversations we've had in facilities committee over the years about things like the state of our roofs and our, our parking lots and that sort of thing. I would make the request to administration and board leadership that we begin the process of, of working through a master planning type process to try to come up with a, a bigger, a plan and a scope to address the needs that we have.
I think it's critical because some of this, some of this is so tied to curriculum.
Yes.
Like for example, what we're talking about as it relates to physical education, as it relates to our arts programming. And then wanting to have good athletic space for our athletic, our athletes. So I, I can see why you're asking that and I think it's important given the competing priorities that are not part of these two reports.
Right.
Right.
I would say that I think our team can help determine how many pencils it might be. But if you've got three or four different pencil jars, I can't tell you how many pencils you want to put in each of those jars. That's where we would need assistance.
You had mentioned some requirements changing around storm hardening structures. How would that affect this?
What has happened is, is the city has adopted the 2018 International Building Code. It's the first building code that specifically put in place that it is a requirement for an educational occupancy of over 50 people to have a designed compliant storm shelter. So the city of Lawrence specifically, and if you want to follow up, Dr. Engelbreit's going to have a screenshot of this later this evening from my email. But the city specifically wrote in some caveats when they adopted that building code, which they can do as the local jurisdiction. But in essence, if you're adding less than, I think the number was 10% of the floor space of a building. So I've got a 200 square foot building and I'm adding 20 more square feet or less. They'll only make you shelter the occupants of that new space. If you start to exceed that, they're going to ask If you start to exceed that, they're going to ask you to consider the occupancy of that entire building and sheltering it in this newly designed, newly engineered shelter. People will use the term FEMA shelter, because FEMA has been one of the major sources of funding for this for years and years. It's part of their post-disaster mitigation funding. I don't like hoping for a tornado. But, the International Code Council in its wisdom has put this into the basic building code. It is no longer something that districts can try to avoid for economics. It is, it is the worst building we're legally allowed to build.
Do we have any storm hardened facilities now?
I don't know that I know that answer.
Yes, we do. Some of our classrooms, particularly at the elementary schools are, have been prepared for storms. We have a, at FNO, we have a room in the center of the building that is prepared for storms.
But in our, in our high schools and junior, and I want to say general, middle schools, do we?
High schools, I do not believe we have any. Our junior high schools, as I think through them, I believe the answer would be no.
I think you have.
I could be wrong.
I want to say we did, we did class, some classrooms in some, where we added classrooms, and I know that where we added classrooms at the elementaries.
Yes, we did.
We did do storm hardened spaces, and I remember we had a conversation in our secondary bond planning about this very requirement because they, it wasn't in the building code, but it was coming. And there was a solution, and...
And the city has acknowledged, I think the city acknowledged in their addendum to the building code that they, in essence, if you've designed some things to be storm hardened, then there's a conversation to be had. Whether it's the full engineered solution that a new facility would have to comply with, there's a, there's a standard out there. I think if you've got explicitly designed things, it, it used to be we would do a space with some storm shutters and, and make sure the walls were out of masonry. I worked for a firm that was part of evaluating Joplin after that tornado. Not all of those spaces do as well as we hoped they did when I was taught to go sit in the hallway and put my head between my knees.
Makes sense.
I have a question, kind of in relation to that. So Lawrence High is lots and lots of windows, so do they have storm shutters or wouldn't, since that's a relatively new build there?
Most of those windows do not have storm shutters, and to be honest with you, I am not aware, standing here, of any windows at that facility that have storm shutters.
But those wouldn't be the storm shelters in the event of a tornado?
No, I'm just saying in general, while it looks very pretty, it's not necessarily practical. Like I know when I toured it with leadership Lawrence, they were talking about like, in active shooter situations, you're supposed to block, and all of the, those rooms down that hallway all have glass to the hallway as well as to the outside, so that becomes a safety risk as well. And so I was just curious about that.
So we did talk about that extensively in the design work at Lawrence High, and there are aspects of the use of that building that make it safe for students. But the, the classrooms wouldn't be where the students are supposed to go in the, that's what I'm saying, is that there are spaces in that building that are designated for students to go in the case of a storm emergency, and they're not, it's not the classrooms.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just have one clarifying question, and it's a, I think it's a very easy answer, but I just want to name it. The elementary education students also are active, we've had conversation about their physical education spaces, about playground equipment that they utilize for physical education. That's not included in here because you've done that analysis as it relates to playgrounds recently, and you know the state of the gyms because of the most recent, I just wanted, if you wouldn't mind clarifying that?
In a larger master study, we would look further into the elementary schools and a total picture of their facilities around activities.
And, and arts and, as well, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, are there additional questions or discussion? I'll give space. Carol, do you have questions that you want to?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report, and we will move now to the next agenda item, which is a motion for an executive session.
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma, with Dr. Janice Kerr Swift interim superintendent invited to be present, and with the Board to return to open session in this room at eight?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, thank you, with no action to follow.
I second.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
From the executive session with no action to follow, we're going to extend and I'm going to ask for our expert Shannon Kimball to help us.
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under Colma, with Dr. Janice Kerr-Swift interim superintendent invited to be present and with the board to return to open session in this room at 9:05 p.m. with no action to follow.
Second.
Kelly Jones.
Yes.
G.R.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Ann.
Yolanda.
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. From the executive session with no action to follow, we're going to extend and I'm going to ask for our expert Shannon Kimball to help us.
From the executive session with no action to follow, is there any new business?
I believe we're all wrapped up, Madam President and members.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Labor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Hold your tongue.
Hey, hey. Uh, adjourn.